Call the December 4th, 2024 Norco City Council Meeting to Order. Roll call.
Councilmember Hannah, Councilmember Grumeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Alaman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Newton.
Here.
Mayor Bash.
Present.
All present, thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Alaman.
Actually, we're going to have a local fifth grader come up. He's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Hello? Hey, I can hear my voice. Uh, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. Those allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For the public for which it stands. And mission under trud and. For all.
Pastor Fred? Let's get us set for the holidays, sir.
Wow, yes. First of all, being in the city for over 10 years, this is the first time I've actually just feel comfortable enough. Normally, I'd be so nervous because you guys looking at me, I'm just nervous. But I am so proud to be a part of the city and what the city stands for. And a lot of places, a city government, they want to take God out. And I just want to say I commend you for allowing God to be a part of this council meeting. With that being said. Could you guys agree with me in prayer, please? Father, I just thank you for this city, Norco, a bright city, oh God. I pray, Father, that their former days are better than their latter days. I pray for every councilman and woman. I pray for the city attorney, the finance department, the city, parks, police chief, everybody who has a part in making this city a great city. According to Romans 13 says that all elected officials are ministers of God. And so, Lord, I just pray for these leaders. I pray for their families. I pray for their children. I pray, Father, that you said in your word, finally in Proverbs 9 and 10, wisdom, the fear of God is the beginning of wisdom. And I thank you, Lord, that you will give this meeting, these leaders, the mayor, the councilmen and women, wisdom because they fear you. I ask you this now, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
So, tonight, we're going to recognize somebody who is a kindred spirit of mine. And first off, I want to welcome the Lieutenant Colonel. Where is he? Right over here. Welcome, sir, thank you so much. That is Mr. Yellis' boss, correct? And one of them. So, but James and I, we go back. And one of the nice things is that he's somebody that, I don't know if you know this, but Norco has a very illustrious military history. Some of you may have been here in 2012 when we had Black History Month. We actually had Robert Reed, a Montford Point Marine, who he would know about. Back 2013, I think we brought in the Joe Dominguez folks, and they talked about how hard it was after World War II to get into the white Jameson posts so they would come to Norco. That was during Hispanic Heritage Month, I think, 2013. Wheelchair basketball was born at our Navy Hospital. The reason I bring these things up is because I'm really proud of our military history. And this council in particular has been very, very generous in their support going back, well, 10 years with the memorial and things like that. So James is somebody that I can actually talk to, so I'm very excited. The other thing is, as a trained historian, he is completely changing the Heritage Room. By the way, the head of that Heritage Room is Amy. Say hello, Amy. You ever get over there, there she is. And of course, Dana is the one that sort of protected us all and made sure we got what we need. But he's shown us how to use scanners. He's showing us how to professionally archive things. He's showing us how to put things online. And I personally am very grateful because a lot of people may not know this, but our historic district is what is saving us from some of the worst legislation that's ever come about in the state of California. And so, our historic district must be protected by a historic room, and James is now a critical component to that. And he's also somebody can call up and say, hey, what did you think about that? We talk about things that happened 500 years ago. So, without much further ado, the City Council, why don't you come on up here, James? And if your boss wants to take pictures or something, he's totally welcome. So, the Norco City Council would like to recognize James Yellis, curator and historian for the 40th Infantry Division Museum. And what's important about that is part of the reason we first started talking is the 40th was at Camp Kearney. And that is where, back in the old days, they would send the Norconians and Coronians, they would go there all together. And then they realized that entire cities would be wiped out because what they thought was if you bring them all together, they would, it would be good for morale. The problem was is you'd have entire generations wiped out from different cities all across the United States. So, but Camp Kearney was one of the lucky ones. I think they lost 10%, something like that, not 10%. Anyway, going on, his outstanding achievement for his efforts to preserve the history of the California Military Department, in which he received an award on November 2nd, 2024, presented on behalf of the former commanding generals for the 40th Infantry Division. I'm going to have James step up here and kind of talk about what he does because I am so proud of the fact he is on our Historic Preservation Commission. And it's just wonderful that you're here, and it's wonderful you give your time for free, which is really great, and we really appreciate it. By the way, he is a decorated combat veteran and did how many tours?
Desert Storm and one in Act 11.
Yeah, so he's the real deal, folks. Why don't you come on up and tell us just a little bit about yourself, then I'm going to give you a little bit of a plaque.
Do I have to use the mic? Can everybody hear me?
They can't hear you at home, please use the mic.
Oh, man, okay. Well, thanks, Kevin, thanks, City Council. My name is Staff Sergeant James Yellis. I'm part of the California State Guard, which is an all-volunteer force. Nobody, when you see the red label, gets paid for anything that they do. I am the curator, like Kevin said, of the 40th Infantry Division. I am also now the deputy curator for the State of California for the Military Department. So everything from north to south, east to west in California, I'm responsible for, along with my boss, Sergeant Major Dan Sebby. Right now, we have close to 25,000 artifacts in our collection. We use Catalogit, same as we're doing with the city of Norco. We've got them in Catalogit. But we estimate that we have over 250,000 photos alone still to catalog. We're trying to clean up 180 years of neglect from the state of California from the Military Department. And right now, we have two of us that are doing it that are qualified historians and curators. So if you know anybody who wants to join. But as far as for the city, what I tried to do is me and Dana and Amy got together and we talked and we got the city on Catalogit so we can better track all of our artifacts. We can track who, where they came from, who donated, who used them, what part of the city they came from, if it was a former mayor, if it was a former city council member. We've got all that stuff cataloged. And what we can do is we can go into Catalogit and just put search and put a name in there, and every item that is affiliated with that person comes up. It's a web-based, so anybody can use it on their phone, their tablet, their laptop, anywhere. We got, I believe we got you set up on it, Kevin? So he can go through and he can track everything that's going through there, and he can help us by some of the names that we've lost over time in history. So that's some of the stuff that we're doing here. We hope to bring you guys by the Heritage Room sometime, look at what we're doing. If you want to volunteer, I'm sure Amy would love to have volunteers, but thanks.
The other thing, too, is if you have things from your family that you, even if you don't feel like it's something that's worthwhile, you never know. I'm still trying to get political signs out of everybody, but, and t-shirts. So anyway, why don't you step out here? So on behalf of the city of Norco, we applaud you and thank you for preserving the history of the California Military Department and congratulate you on being recognized by the commanding general for the 40th Infantry. So on behalf of the City Council, here's this, and then here's a sticky challenge coin from the 10th anniversary. And you can put that on your car so people know you're from Horsen, USA. So now, moving on to public comments. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. City Council reports on regional boards.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Grumeyer. Catherine?
Yes, on November 21st, I attended the Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees meeting, and it was business as usual. It is not mosquito season, so there is not much to report.
Councilman Hannah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. RTA, the ridership was up 13.2%, and the physical year ridership is up 8.1. That's quite a bit since the pandemic year. And the board awarded a contract to build and design a new updated Riverside Bus Wash. I think that one that's there is, equipment's 40 years old. And they're still offering free rides on all fixed route buses on New Year's Eve. So you don't have to get a designated driver, just take the bus. RCTC is applied for state funding for the solutions of congested corridors program and local partnership program for 85 million and 25 million for the I-15 Express Lane Southern Extension. What that is, is they're going to extend the express lane southbound from Cahalko Road into almost Lake Elsinore down there, see if they can ease that traffic congestion. And tickets are available for purchase for Betrolink to the Riverside Downtown Station Holiday Express Train on December the 7th. Two train rides featuring Santa at 10:30 and 1:30. And weeknight closures on 7191, beginning on December the 2nd through December the 18th and January the 6th through January the 22nd. And yesterday, I attended the grand reopening of the Speakeasy Barbecue. They've switched their menu over. I mean, they had good barbecue, but now they've got lots of different items on there. They've got all kinds of bowls and different plate lunches and stuff like that. And there was probably 50 people attended that ribbon cutting. Of course, everybody stood in line to get food because it's good food. It wasn't free, but they had it there anyway. But anyway, thank you much.
Thank you, Berwin. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. No regional board meetings this last month, so nothing to report on that. Last Thursday, though, we had a meeting with the mayor, staff, and Cal Fire. Basically, it was to review the fire tier maps. This was in conjunction with the land use battalion chiefs with Cal Fire. And then after that, we had a short discussion on a couple of future things to look at. One is the WPA, the Wildland Protection Agreement, and then also the helipod project that we had discussed or brought up a few months ago, and just trying to move forward on that. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
For me, I had a whole bunch of meetings, but the key ones, first, the Riverside Conservation Authority. I was surprised, I was asked to continue on as the chair. The Conservation Authority is one of the things that our city helped found, and what it does is it, it's so that builders, when they want to build in a certain place, if there's an endangered species, they can actually purchase or put money toward acres of land that are in certain zones to protect animals, animals, plant species, endangered species. And just, just, well, just since 2010, we've literally preserved thousands and thousands of acres. And so, it's one of the few things that I look at, is everything changes. I'm confident that my children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren will actually have these wonderful open spaces. And then the Western Regional Council of Governments, the big push right now is we are looking to move out of the current building that we lease at a very high cost and looking to buy a building. And so, right now is the time to buy, if you're going to buy. And with that, we will move on to public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time when persons wishing to address the presiding governmental body regarding the consent calendar or matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The governmental body shall not discuss or act relative to any general public comment. First one is Jeff Shu.
Good, Jeff. Good morning, Mayor and members of the City Council.
Good morning.
Evening. Evening. I work from home, it all kind of blends together now. No, I wanted to take this opportunity to really thank each and every one of you for serving on the City Council. It's clear to me that the time is a labor of love because I can't imagine anybody doing and spending the amount of time going through these agenda packages that come up every two weeks. But one of the special things is I wanted to bring to, to say a special thanks to Councilwoman Alman for the last four years that you've spent here. It's apparent to me how much blood, sweat, and tear you poured into this. I've watched some of your recaps that happened after midnight after a marathon session, and I know that that certainly comes at a cost of your family life as well as professional life. So I applaud you for the dedication that you have provided for the city and that really happy for your husband and kids that they're going to have some of the time back. So with that, I just wanted to wish every single one of you guys a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Jeff.
And our next speaker is Jeff Kayhan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Piggybacking on the presentation, military history, just a reminder, because you know me, I'm big on dates and anniversaries. Tomorrow, December 5th, from 2012, was the, tomorrow's the 12th anniversary of when the council decided to make the Veterans Memorial Project a reality. So just, that's a big date that stands out in my mind. And also with December 7th coming up, I want to invite everybody to the Veterans Memorial. The Lake Norconian Club Foundation has sponsored every year a commemoration of that very important day in world history. And so, I'd like to make sure that Norco does what Norco does best, and we always remember, we never forget. So if you can join us, everybody in the community is invited to join us at 10:00 a.m. on the 7th at the Plaza. And I also want to recognize Councilman Hannah. I know this is your last meeting as well. A couple of years ago, you thought it was your last meeting. And yeah, about four years ago, you thought it was your last meeting. And sadly, through the tragic loss of Councilman Ted Hoffman, you unselfishly stepped up and served the community again. And I know you thought that you weren't going to have to ever do that again, and at a moment's notice, you were available to come back and help the community. And I just want to tell you how much we appreciate your devotion to the town that you came back. And I know that I will never say the 7th month again without saying it July, in memory of Berwin Hannah. So again, thank you for your last meeting and for what you've done for us over the last year and a half in the crisis that presented itself. So thank you, sir, for coming back and giving of your time and your dedication. So thank you very much.
Our next speaker, Eric Lemus.
Hello, Council. I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize Catherine's service over this term. It's been a long walk, a long march. You were a little ahead, and I was behind, looking for the stragglers, making sure they were safe. But we, we did okay. At this time, I feel like we are losing an advocate for the dispossessed, people who don't necessarily feel part of the community. But as you leave and we're at, with this loss, we, we've learned that we have a large constituency, and they are strong and very willing to be part of something. And that is because of you. And I'd like to thank you from the entire Lemus family, Marcia, Lee, Lana, Ben, me, Sarah, Jules, Zo, Richard, and Lolly, just to say thanks, and we'll see you later.
Thank you, Mr. Lemus.
Our next speaker is Betsy Roberts.
Hi, Betsy, how are you?
Okay, physically, not so good, but this is what COVID does to you. Anyway, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilpersons. I've been at many meetings in the past, as some of you know. My family's lived here for 41 years, so we saw Norco before the freeway and so forth. But I just needed to come and also express my appreciation for what you all do, but particularly for Catherine, because I know you haven't lived here your entire life, but you have what makes Norco Norco, caring about other people with diverse backgrounds, populations, people who maybe are underserved, particularly different ethnic groups. And I'm hoping that that thought process will continue. So I just really want to thank you. I feel like you've been one of the best council people that we've had since I've lived here. And so, thank you for your service. Thank you again, Berwin. I know we worked together a few years ago on the whole Wiley Labs piece when people didn't want to hear about it. But I think the context is there, and hopefully, some people will start to kind of look outside their own little sphere and see, yes, there are other people, and their voices need to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Our next speaker is Jeff Milo.
I want to recognize, by the way, Councilwoman Jocelyn Yao from Eastville back there. So thank you for coming to our meeting, we really appreciate it. I serve with her on a couple of committees. Come on up, sir.
Shame on me for not asking if I could bring these up.
Oh, that's okay, that's fine.
Again, I apologize. Well, not all of the speakers tonight are named Jeff, but just most of us evidently. And that's, good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Milo, and I came here tonight to honor and thank outgoing Councilman, Council Member Catherine Alman for her service. My wife Sandy wanted me to be sure to let you all know that if she were not traveling out of state right now, she'd be right here at my side, offering these same sentiments. We've been privileged to call Norco our home for 27 years. This city, its culture, its lifestyle, and its people have enriched our lives and have helped us raise two delightful children into wonderful, contributing young women. Our Liberty Teachers 1st Grade in Corona Norco School District, and our Maggie, true to her Norco roots, taking care of animals, is now Citrus County, Florida's Chief Veterinarian. Catherine has worked hard and shown us that she is committing, committed to not only raising her boys in the same fashion, I'm sorry, but to preserving and enriching our community for generations to come. So I'm sorry I did write this because I didn't want to miss some.
You're doing great, you're fine.
Thank you, Kevin. Character counts, character counts. We have all seen posters in our classrooms stating the importance of values such as respect, honesty, kindness, humility, and forgiveness. Well, our Catherine has shown those in action, and we'd all do well to live up to the example that you've set. Catherine's time at the front of this room comes to an end. She departs with dignity and grace as she does everything, and I'm certain that her commitment and work on behalf of this community will not end here. We want to offer you our best wishes, not goodbye, but farewell. We wish you and your tribe of boys many, many happy trails in the future. Closing, thank you to Berwin for your service. That's why I'm up here to thank Catherine. Congratulations to our new council members, and thank you to all of you for the wonderful work you do. We're counting on you to preserve this unique community for generations to come. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Well said.
Our next speaker is Bill Naylor.
Evening, Council. Getting a little bit different here. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for bringing something to your attention that needs to be, needed to be addressed, and that was the signage for Ingalls Event Center. I do have a little bit of a concern. and that was the signage for Ingalls Event Center. I do have a little bit of a concern, though, regarding that. And since it did not come before the Parks and Recreation Commission for us to give us any input, this is my only chance to really say something to the public about it. Two things. One, it did not come before the Parks and Recreation Commission so we could at least have some input into it. It is a really needed type of program. But I do have one big concern. And that is, earlier this year, I'd asked why Ingalls Event Center was not included in the overall park master plan. And I was told some legitimate reasons for it. And I says, okay, I can live with that. But that they would bring it back as a request for funding for a master plan for Ingalls for this coming year. Now, with that being said, I would think if we're going to spend $130,000, $150,000 on signage, we might want to wait and see what the new park master plan for Ingalls is going to be, if in fact it's going to be one. I kind of, were we putting the cart before the horse? I really think signage is necessary, but have we really looked at it overall? Just a concern. Also, I'd like to thank our outgoing council members for their service for the last four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cade Barone.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. I wanted to speak today to thank Catherine Alaman for her service on this council. Some of you don't know this, but I worked closely with Catherine on her reelection campaign these last few months. And it was an honor to work alongside her. I have loved politics for years, and it has always been a dream of mine to work on a political campaign. So I thank you for the opportunity you have given me. You are one of the people I look up to. I have learned so many things and got experience that is invaluable. I am deeply saddened by your departure from this council. I got to personally see how much you care about Norco and the people who live here. When we were out canvassing every Saturday, I saw you talk to voters from both sides of the political aisle and offer your time to anyone who had any concerns or questions. You brought personability and action to our city council as well as kindness and decency. You are more than just a councilwoman. You are a resident here and have the same care and dedication as any other animal-loving, rural-lifestyle-living person in this town. Though you received hate during the campaign, I know there are many of us that have truly appreciated your time on this council, so let the haters hate. The fight is never over, and there is so much more to accomplish. Thank you for all your time and service to our city, and don't ever stop trying to make the world a better place.
Thank you. Well said.
Our next speaker is Jocelyn Yao.
I've outed you.
I thought it would be for item, the next item, but happy to be here. Good to see familiar faces. Berwin, I did not realize this was also your last council meeting.
He has one more meeting.
Oh, one more. Okay, there we go. Perfect. And I'll see you at the T-NOW or T-NOW Holiday Luncheon, hopefully. But good to be here. Catherine, here, I am very, very proud of you. I still remember when you first ran four years ago. It was during COVID, and you called me and you were like, I'm running in the city of Norco. I had not met you then, but I heard about your stories. And you introduced yourself to me over the phone, and immediately I was in awe of your background. And I remember just contributing right off the spot, having never even met you. And I just want to say I'm so proud of you. Thank you for your dedication to the city, to the community, and also to the world. Your commitment to public service did not just begin out of nowhere when you got elected. It was evident even before that, whether it was through Peace Corps or your career in education. Your passion for, to serve your community and your passion for public service are evident. And for that, I'm so proud of you, so proud of all that you have done to make this city a more just and equitable place. And boys, I know you guys are back there. I hope you all feel really proud of your mom. And I am so happy for all that you have done. I'm so proud of you. And I'm even more proud to call you a friend of mine, Catherine. And I better stop now before I get emotional, but just want to say thank you again for your service, Catherine. And Berwin, I will see you at the holiday luncheon.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Mayor, there's no further comments.
All right. We'll now close public comments and move on to the consent calendar. Before we begin, is there anybody that wishes to, any public comments? So we're opening and closing public comments for the consent calendar. Does anybody here wish to pull an item, any councilperson?
Number G.
G? Any others?
Motion to approve the remaining.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Please vote. Motion passed as unanimous. Thank you.
Berwin, 3G.
Yeah, I just wanted to, excuse me, I wanted to commend Amanda and her staff on the purchase of this new equipment for the Marino Arena up there. It's much needed. I think Mr. Newton put that in, what, in 2002, that equipment that's there? Well, you built the building, though. So anyway, that stuff's pretty well wore up, wore out, beat up and everything. And on the council here, previous time, 13 years, and we had a pretty good staff, except a couple of times, we had a couple of slackers that wasn't doing much. But this go around, staff is doing real good. I got to commend everybody that's owned staff. But I want to tell you, I didn't know Amanda when I came back on here. And they'd changed everything up in those departments and everything. But Amanda's got to be a pretty good horse trader to come up with a deal on this equipment like she got. This brand-new stuff from the largest arena manufacturer in the United States and top quality and everything. And she saved us a bunch of, bunch of money on that. And I appreciate everything you and your staff done. And I'm sure that all the groups that use that up there will be happy and get rid of the dangerous spots that's up there. So thanks again, Amanda. And I make a motion to approve that item.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Vote.
Please vote. And motion passed as unanimous. Thank you.
Moving on to city council, staff communications. Any staff have anything that needs to be shared? Chad, Amanda, anybody over in the Alma, the set, city council, anything to share? Yes, please.
Yes. I didn't pay anybody to come and speak tonight on my behalf. But I would like to publicly express my deep appreciation for my family and the sacrifices they have made in order for me to serve our community. When I first ran for council, I had a two-year-old, a four-year-old, and two six-years-old. And in December of 2020, my youngest was three. And he sat on my lap just over there as I waited in my white suit in honor of the 100th year of women's suffrage in the United States to be sworn in as a Norco City Council member. My children are now seven, eight, and 10 years old. They walked Norco neighborhoods helping me campaign. They've written letters to voters in support of their mom. They've come to numerous city events, and they volunteered by my side. Easton, Cody, Logan, and Jasper, you have been in my heart and mind every day that I have done this job. When I deliberated about the impact of upcoming votes and policies, it is the future that will soon be yours that influenced my decisions. You are why I worked so hard, took the high road, and put our country's principles of justice, peace, care, and liberty at the forefront of all that I did. To my steadfast partner and husband who supported me when I decided to run for city council, even though it meant I would be placing our family and our children in a public position that they didn't ask for, thank you. You have been there for all of us while I was at meeting after meeting, event after event, and out-of-town learning, collaborating, and lobbying for resources for our city and for our region. Thank you for setting an example to our children that everyone should have the opportunity to serve their community, especially working mothers of young children. And to everyone who volunteered, knocked doors, hung signs, replaced them when they were stolen, wrote postcards, phone-banked, and donated their hard-earned dollars so that we could reach out to voters, thank you for believing in me and what our campaign stood for. We had high school seniors, parents, college students, retired folks and more, all giving the most valuable gift that anyone can give, their time. Without you, I would not be here. I am in your debt and so very honored to have received your support. And to my dearest neighbors, serving as your city council member has been a labor of love. And as with anything worth doing, it has not been easy. Being in the public eye is not for the faint of heart. But I persevered because I knew you were counting on me to speak up, to do the right thing, and to represent our community well. I was elected to do important work, and I believed that work would speak for itself. I still do. My greatest hope is that for the last four years, I have served you well. I can tell you that I am so proud to have championed the purchase of five acres for affordable housing for our veterans and a Parks and Recreation Master Plan to lay the groundwork for new and updated facilities for our youth. I worked to protect our historic equestrian district by working with state leaders, started our city celebration of Dia de los Muertos, oversaw numerous recognitions of our diverse community with monthly proclamations. I asked for a moratorium on new warehouses and revisions to our city code to minimize any future impacts on residents and bring in good-paying jobs. I worked to increase funding for the city's award-winning homeless outreach program, added youth commissioners to every city commission, and initiated a new program called Join the Flock that will provide free chickens to residents, inviting more Norconians into our rural and agricultural lifestyle. All this was done while maintaining a balanced budget and growing our city's reserves for what will always be an uncertain future. I voted no when decisions were being made without adequate analysis or sufficient input from the public. And I voted yes on fair policies, strict oversight of public funds, and I kept you and your family, along with my own, in mind with every vote I made. I rejoiced when new residents participated in our democratic process, and I held open office hours every year to make city hall more accessible. I posted live recaps of every city council meeting to make your local government more transparent and open so that you could be informed, even if you couldn't attend city council meetings. When I decided to run in 2020, I promised to stay true to who I am and the values I hold dear. It would have been easy to join certain groups in order to check boxes, but I know that being a good neighbor is so much more than that. So if any part of losing this race was because I'm a Democrat in a conservative town, I am infinitely proud. If believing in civil rights and speaking out and protesting for racial justice in 2020 cost me votes, I wouldn't change a thing. And if telling the truth on the dais got me skipped as mayor pro tem and mayor in an election year, then skip me again. I'm telling you, I will lose this race over and over if it means that I led with integrity, honesty, and love for my neighbors. We are stronger because of our differences, not in spite of them. This dais is a better place when we have a diversity of ages, life experiences, and views. As a wise constituent once said, if you all think the same, why do we need five of you? And so in the words of Abraham Lincoln, with malice towards none, with charity to all, I expend my very best wishes to the incoming council who will begin their work at our next meeting. And while I won't be on the council, I will continue working to better our city, our region, our state, and our country every chance I get. If you see me out, come and say hello. I am and always will be your neighbor.
Any other council members? All right. So we're going to move to call on our city manager. Interim. Tell you what, I'll come down and I'll hold your stuff for you.
I'm short. So on behalf of, yes. Oh, you want to come down? Catherine? So Councilmember Alaman, on behalf of the city council and staff, we would like to present you with this certificate for your dedication and service to us for the last four years. The city of Norco hereby recognizes Catherine Alaman for her service on the Norco City Council and dedicated commitment to the residents of Norco. So this is for you. And also, we would also, Mayor Bash would like to say some words in presentation, so.
So hang on. So it's actually been a pleasure to serve with Catherine. It's been the best and worst of times. She has, she, how I would describe Catherine is she is a person of great courage. Only people that have served on a council can really understand what it's like to have your turn in the barrel. And she spent a good amount of her time in the barrel. And she did, she withstood it with grace, composure, and she never lost her personal bearing. Lots of disagreements between council people, disagreements with the public. And at the end of the day, the word I would use for her is courage. And so for that, I applaud her. And I think the city is a better place because you are here. So I want to thank you for your service. And one second. Can I put her on? All right, there you go. She looks good in a cowboy hat. Would you like to say a few words?
Nada más quería decir que, qué bien cuando dijiste Catherine Alaman, gracias. So my name is a hard name. Not everyone says it correctly, so I appreciate that. So no, just thank you to everyone who spoke so kindly. Muchísimas gracias a todos. And I'm looking forward to good things. Norco's future is very bright. Thank you.
Could you all come down off the dais picture? How about just stand up in the back? How's that sound? How's that sound? And without further ado, thank you. My cheat sheet. Make sure I don't miss something. And we're going now, we're going to adjourn to the reception right out here and within this room. So thank you all for coming.